And we do have five of us. So hopefully some they'll just jump in when we get here. Um, so let's, it's six thirty and we're starting the meeting. So here we go. Uh, let's start with introductions and um, how about you Doug? Looks like you're on top. Introductions.
Doug Carmen, uh, District two.
Scott.
Scott Nelson, District three.
Don. Don. You're muted, Don.
I beg your pardon, Don Dehand, District one.
No worries, my friend. And Eric.
Eric Casino, District two.
And I'm, my name's Jim Simmons and I'm from District three. So we start out with public communications. Um, for if you're new, please raise your hand. So we can recognize you, you have three minutes. Uh, to do your communicating. Paulie will have a timer up there. It'll start in the green and it'll work to yellow. When yellow comes on, you have thirty seconds. And then when the red comes on, I'm just, we're asked that you just kind of wrap up what you have to say. And um, we'll move on. So.
Jim?
Yes.
Before we do that, do we have an agenda?
You're right. Sorry, my apologies. Um, so I'm asking for um, somebody to make a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying hi.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Okay, so moving on to number two. Um, is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes from February third, two thousand twenty-one, signify by saying hi.
Alright, hi.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you Scott for that. I'm, yeah, we're getting there. Um, okay, so back to the, eh, back to the public comments. And I'm not seeing anything on, oh, there we go. Here with me, please. So it looks like the, on the top of the list is Lynn Lanowick. Are you there Lynn? Looks like you, there we go.
How about that?
Perfect.
Okay, thanks Eric, I appreciate the heading on. Okay, so a couple of weeks ago, um, I commented on uh, SMP about um, having the coverings on uh, boat lifts and whether or not the boat cover should be clear or not clear. And I also said something about um, the size of the dock. And that was in one of the uh, figures that said it should be like ten feet for a lake. Well, I've been thinking about that over the last couple of weeks. Here's, here's two comments that I have on that. One, ten feet for a dock or a float on a lake would not be very big. We're talking four blankets laid out if you were gonna sunbathe. Right? If you were using that as a swimming platform, it just wouldn't be very serviceable. Second, it wouldn't be large enough for um, large boats. The third thing that I have that I've been thinking about, when I had the planner come out and determine the length of my dock, we did a, an assessment and that my dock could not be any farther out, protrude any farther out of the lake than the average from what the other docks were that were close to me. So if you get that. Um, my dock could not be twenty feet out and everybody else is ten. But my dock could be fifteen feet out if everybody else was fifteen feet. So we did a, an eye check, left and right, determined how far my dock could go out. So here's my suggestion before we lock into the SMP on some measurements on docks, that a conversation be had with the planners to determine how do they determine the length of a dock in um, in a lake setting at least? And what is the most reasonable approach for them to do? I hope that makes sense to you and that's uh, all I've got to say tonight. Thank you very much.
Uh, John Woodford, could you please introduce yourself and tell us where you live? John, are you still there?
Okay, there we have, this, the little signal just came on. Uh, good evening Commissioners. As you proceed tonight with chapter nineteen six hundred, I just want to remind you all to be aware of the distinctions between marine waters, rivers and lakes. I know that's kind of been uh, a theme of the last couple of meetings, but uh, just, just keep that in mind. Uh, we on lakes do not have the same situation as people in marine waters. Uh, I also want to talk about the redesignation of some twenty-seven hundred parcels. Over the last three planning commission meetings, every challenge to the designation has been upheld by the planning commission, which raises in my mind some very serious questions about the inventory and characterization report and the shoreline environmental designation mapping. And I would hope to hear from staff about what the path forward is in dealing with the some twenty-six hundred more uh, re-designated properties that will be coming before you. Uh, it seems like there needs to be a whole re-evaluation of this uh, redesignation. But I do want to point out one very missed property in the redesignations that have been done. It's a property here on Long Lake. It's a sixteen and a half acre parcel known as Carpenter's Park. It should never have been designated rural to begin with or shoreline residential. It should have been designated rural conservation or natural from the beginning. And I feel should be re-designated to one of those designations now. It's a sixteen and a half acre parcel, as I mentioned. Twelve hundred and fifty lineal feet of shoreline on our lake, which is nearly a quarter of a mile. It's a property that's in pristine condition. It has uh, kind of extreme topography. It has a very fragile high bluff. Uh, and a somewhat fragile shoreline. The entire shoreline area and all of that high bluff are heavily forested. Uh, and the site is virtually an animal and bird sanctuary now. Uh, Mr. Davis and Mr. Defoas should be aware of this because of information that they've been included on that we're having some uh, issues with some illegal and unpermitted activity taking place on the site. But the site is being proposed for subdivision into thirty-eight residential lots. And this just is totally inconsistent with what that property is. And I hope, I know it's not a planning condition, uh, commission issue right now, but it probably will be. And uh, I hope that staff uh, understands the feelings of people on this lake. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Um, Barry Halverson.
Uh, good evening Commissioners, uh, my name is Barry Halverson. Uh, I'm with the Lake Lawrence Community Club, uh, Lake Management District out here at Lake Lawrence. Uh, on the fifth, on the February third, I presented some information to you on the Lake Lawrence uh, SED LLA eight, uh, known as Goat Island. Uh, I appreciate uh, the actions that you've taken. But I was very concerned about the staff response and the information provided by the staff to you at that meeting. Um, so concerned that immediately following that meeting, I sent an email off to the staff identifying my concerns. There is no opportunity uh, for the community or for someone presenting an issue to the Commissioners that is going to be voted on or decided by the Commissioners to come back after they make a three-minute presentation, which is not enough time. I timed the staff presentation, which is fifteen minutes. Uh, to, to counter what the staff has said. I think in the future, when you have a decision that's being made uh, on an issue from the community, I understand what your current rules are, you can't come back and say anything. That happened to me three years ago, when a fish and wildlife biologist got up and talked to your uh, committee. I was in the audience with my wife and I don't know who, what lake this individual was talking about, but it wasn't Lake Lawrence. I wrote the history for Lake Lawrence and it's online. I tried to stand up and say something about what this biologist was saying. I was told to sit down and shut up, that I, my three minutes was gone. I understand that, but there needs to be some give and take on this. Immediately following that meeting, I sent a reply to Brad, who was the staff planner at the time, with the information that was accurate. I don't know if that ever got to the Commissioners or not, but I don't think it did, because a lot of that information about salmon habitat is in the SMP right now. And I've told the staff that that needs to be taken out. Lake Lawrence is not a salmon habitat area and never has been. So there needs to be some type of give and take uh, with the community and the individuals making presentations to the Commissioners. Um, because there is some misinformation being provided to the Commissioners and there's no opportunity for the Commissioners to hear the rebuttal on that information. I do appreciate everything you've done. The SMP is a tough project. It's a long project and I think you've done an outstanding job in dealing with all the issues. I just wish there was some opportunity for the community to provide some type of rebuttal to what the staff says when the community doesn't agree with it. I'm still waiting for a response from the staff on the issues that I've provided. I appreciate your time and thank you very much for everything you do.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Going. Anybody else would like to, to share at the public comments? Okay, we're moving forward on the agenda. Um, we're to the work session on the master, shoreline master program. And so Andrew, it looks like you're up.
Hey, I'm gonna jump in, Jim.
Oh boy.
No, I just wanted to bring, uh, get us all on the same page of where we are in this process and for the public watching as well. Um, I realize this has been a lengthy review process with the planning commission and a lot of information is being presented and the planning commission has been making preliminary decisions about what needs to go in the public hearing draft. But we have not yet held a public hearing on this draft of the SMP and that is still to come. So if the public is looking for opportunities to provide um, information to the planning commission, um, we have a whole um, opportunity for that on the horizon. What that looks like is once the planning commission is through this review, and I'm encouraging the planning commission to get through this review so we can get to what the public's really, I think, clamoring for, um, would be an opportunity for us to put everything, all the updated um, options, the draft you've um, been tinkering with, the interactive map we've showed you before. Do the postcard mailings for folks whose designations are significantly changing. Um, do a, an online open house that will run for several weeks with all of this information embedded. Folks can learn, folks can ask questions. Then we get to have our public hearing and everyone can come and it would, it will be a lengthy night, the night of the public hearing. I anticipate, um, but we need to be able to get there so that folks feel like they're having that full, robust opportunity to provide their input. Uh, and we're not there yet. So although we always have public comment at the beginning of all of our planning commission meetings, these aren't public hearings, this is three-minute public comment, which can be on any topic. This isn't the planning commission's public hearing on the SMP, that's still to come. We gotta get there, we gotta set that hearing, we gotta get the open house materials up so that everybody's working from the same uh, playbook when we have that public hearing. Um, and then you'll be able to hear from multiple voices in the community with a whole host of ideas and um, places where they think we need to do more, do better, do different. Um, and then we get to digest that and the planning commission and the staff get to go through that together and land on finally a recommendation to the board. So that is all still to come. I know it takes patience, it's a long process, but um, we're getting there and I'm just hopeful that we can get there sooner than later. I know that you want to go through very specifically all of the items of this chapter and the rest of the chapters. This is the hardest chapter maybe to do that on, so I appreciate the careful um, and the amount of time you're taking and the care you're taking to look through all of the sections and the, the standards, the development standards. We'd love to be able to launch our open house in the April timeframe. That only gives the planning commission another couple of meetings to really get through the meat of the shoreline master program draft update. We are up against some deadlines with ecology. Um, we have a grant from ecology that's funding uh, a lot of this work and we have some deliverables due. Um, we're already kind of past our due dates on most of those, but I think they'll give us some grace since they can see that we're really working at it. But um, your plate will also get fuller as we get future, into the year. And there's a lot of other high priority items the board is gonna want you to look at this year. So I just wanted to give some context encouragement. Thank you for the careful work you're doing. Would really love to get us to that public hearing spot so the public can feel like they have the full package of materials to react to and to give you their input on. And now I'll turn it over to Andy.
Great, thank you Jennifer. Um, so tonight we'll continue with the planning commission's review of the shoreline master program continuing in chapter nineteen six hundred. Uh, we're looking for specific amendments to the text that the planning commission would like to incorporate into the public hearing draft or any options that they want the public to consider uh, in that draft. And that can include, you know, you heard some of the types of things tonight. So looking at the differences potentially for standards within the different environments uh, or specific design standards within these different uses and modifications in chapter nineteen six hundred. It's those sorts of potential tweaks or changes that, that we're looking for specific things. Um, you did receive one written comment uh, that was forwarded to you and posted online. So with that, uh, I will go ahead and share my screen and we'll jump back in where we were. Okay. So hopefully you're seeing the SMP document. So we, I had us, that we stopped at the end of the uh, the land use matrix table in chapter nineteen six hundred. So I was planning to just start from here and we can, we can move on.
Andrew, before we move in, I was looking at some of my notes and clarification. Um, what I had in my notes is chapter six hundred is for new development and chapter four hundred is for existing development. Is that correct?
I think largely yes. Um, chapter four hundred uh, has all of the, all of the stuff for um, what's currently called non-conforming in the draft, but any legally existing, whatever we land on for that, anything that's existing development that's within shoreline jurisdiction is covered by four hundred. So six hundred is, is largely going to be things for new development. I think as, as we go through, uh, and there are any exceptions to that rule, you know, we could talk about those, but generally speaking, uh, like to use docks, for example. Um, you know, all the standards about how a dock needs to be constructed is not going to automatically apply to all the existing ones, right? It's, it's for new docks. Uh, there may be some language in the, in chapter six hundred here that talks about replacement. So it's not necessarily going to apply to you just keeping your, whatever your use is in the state that it's in. But when you go to potentially replace something or make upgrades, then some of these standards in six hundred may apply, even though you previously had a um, something there.
Right, so, so it's, it's new development, which can be all different levels as versus new construction. With new construction, you think of as brand new houses and that kind of thing.
Right, yeah, brand new, brand new construction um, within the shoreline jurisdiction would be covered by this chapter.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's interplay between the chapters, of course, as you know, because the buffers are, for that new development are in chapter four hundred. But specifically development standards, um, you're largely seeing them here in six hundred.
Alright, and then the next question is exempt, the E here in this chart. It's exempt from the shoreline, uh, SDP, but does exempt mean that you need a shoreline exemption permit?
There would be a letter of exemption that would be written. So all of the, so the, the broad, uh, the overall permitting uh, system within the SMP recognizes four different types, general types of permits, right? You have your shoreline substantial development permit, you have your conditional use permit, a variance, and then what's known as a letter of exemption. And so those, if you are exempt from the provisions of the SDP, we would be issuing a letter of exemption and all of those items are, are then tracked. We're keeping track of all those permits or letters that are issued in shoreline jurisdiction.
Okay, but that letter of exemption is not a shoreline exemption permit?
It's technically not a permit. It's be, because it's a, it's a record of the fact that you are exempt from that SDP. But it's not, it's not a permit, so uh, but just because you don't need a permit does not mean those other development standards don't apply. So if you're building a home, for example, we know that uh, this, a single-family home is exempt from the requirement of an SDP, um, broadly speaking, uh, but that, but it still has to comply with the, the development standards of chapter nineteen six hundred. The buffer standards still apply. So, so the master program and the provisions of the master program still apply, even if the, there is no actual permit that needs to go across the desk.
Hey Andrew, on this letter of exemption, I understand why uh, the county is gonna need that for tracking programmatic ecological function losses. But what happens, I mean, I think that the average citizen is gonna see that they are exempt and then not even do anything. What happens if, if a landowner reads that uh, activity is exempt, but does not come to you for a letter of exemption? Is there some sort of enforcement or penalty action that would happen?
Um, I think that's prob, I mean, that's an education issue, right? So that, that's certainly gonna be incumbent upon the, the county to let people know, because there are potentially activities that wouldn't otherwise require a permit that are still regulated by the SMP, because they would potentially authorize, um, you know, uh, impacts to that environment. But you know, then on the other hand, you have, if you're building a house, you know, most people understand, I'm, I'm building a house, I need to go to the county, I need to get permits. And then it's, it's, it's in that interaction at the permit counter that, that they will find out, um, okay, you know, your permit's gonna be routed for shoreline review, it's gonna be routed to environmental health, because you're getting septic, it's gonna be routed all these different ways. So you know, there are certainly uses that are covered in the SMP here that uh, require other county permits in general. And that's how they're gonna get routed for shoreline review. And then there are things that people would potentially do and not necessarily think that they would need, again, not a permit, but perhaps some sort of approval. So I think that, I think there's gonna be a mix there of, of people who find out coming in and also the need to educate. And that's the same, same way we are right now with critical areas. It's my best corollary, because that's what I'm used to work on before SMP. You know, you don't need a permit to, to go to Home Depot and buy a small shed and put it in your backyard. You don't need a building permit for that, but if you put it in a wetland buffer, technically that's a violation of, of the critical areas ordinance. So it's all about educating.
Yeah, well, I guess, I guess where I'm getting, if, if nothing else is wrong, other than they did not get a letter of exemption, hmm. Is there gonna be some, i- i- is there gonna be a policy um, formulated for what you do in those particular cases?
I'd have to look into that. I, I'd have to look into exactly how that would go. But technically, if, if they were supposed to get some sort of letter and did not, I mean, that would be, I would imagine that would be considered or could be considered a violation of code. But I would want to go and look into that before um, committing to that answer. Um, so. Yeah, is that something that folks would like more information on? If I can.
I would.
Alright, so essentially what happens uh, if development proceed, or well, development or use proceeds without getting a letter? And we're assuming again, it's a user development that would otherwise be exempt from any sort of permit, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Part of that has to do with the little booklet or pamphlet or flyer, or whatever you want to call it, that we've been talking about all, all along, is that we want to make it easy for people to comply. And, and how they're informed is gonna determine how they, how easy it is for them to comply.
Right.
That booklet is key to all of that.
Yeah, and quite frankly, if, if somebody did something and the only thing that they did wrong was they didn't get a letter of exemption, uh, I would hate to see somebody get jammed up for that. I mean, I want everybody to comply that needs to comply and stuff that they need to. But if the only thing they didn't comply on was they did not get their letter of exemption, I'd have a really hard time putting the screws to somebody for that.
Hmm. Yeah, and I don't, I don't want to speak for our code compliance team and how they do things or, you know, but yeah, I will, I will look into that, um, because I, I agree with that sentiment, Eric. I think that's, I think you're right on. I mean, we don't want to punish people, um, and we don't want to be overly punitive on things. If there's a, if there's an easy way to remedy something and, you know, there's a pattern that points to a lack of education on our part that we're not providing, then I think that's something we need to work on or do something about. So. Okay. We have my first task for the evening. Alright, so let's uh, go ahead and get into chapter six hundred. Um, so I'm going through the um, uh, the footnotes here that were part of the table. I don't know if anyone has comments there, otherwise I'll go ahead and scroll down here to agriculture. Okay, um, so does anyone have comments or want to say anything about uh, chapter nineteen six hundred one-ten, the agriculture?
Under BA, no BB, B one B. B one B. Um, expansion of agricultural activities on existing agricultural lands shall be encouraged to comply. I, I would say should be required to comply.
So that goes back to um, state law. And so state law uh, exempts existing and ongoing agriculture from new regulation under the SMP. And so we cannot require that. So hence the language for encouraging. We can't, we can't make them comply with that, but we can certainly encourage. And that goes back to, you know, uh, education or what have you, other, other ways to do that, but we cannot require that.
So if the land is, is zoned agriculture, even though it's currently not in agriculture and it's along the shore of a lake or a stream or a river or a um, the marine environment, they expand into that, they don't have to comply with this, is that right?
If the lands, um, if, if, if the land is already being used for agricultural use and they expand that use, um, they are not required to comply with, with the SMP. So it's title, um, title seventeen fifteen, the critical areas ordinance regulates um, ongoing and existing agriculture. New agricultural activities uh, on land that was not previously used for agriculture would be subject to um, to this program. And that's where the standards go on down below.
Okay, because it's just the way I read it, it sounds as though it's new agriculture, but.
So it's, so number, letter, or excuse me, number one there uh, is all about existing agriculture. So anything that's new, existing agriculture or, or existing agricultural land. So number two then, below that is um, is new agricultural practices that would be occurring um, below the buffer. And this is all just FYI, it, it looks like it's new because it's all in green, but it's, this was all moved around. So these, these standards have not been changed. They were moved around for, for consistency, because it used to be uh, even less clear before. Is there anything else in the agriculture section?
What, what would be agriculture is in the classification as far as buffer, right? It's not shoreline residential, it's not natural, it's not conservancy, what? It's not shoreline residential, it's not natural, it's not conservancy, what, what is it classified as?
So. Looking here at letter B under two, so for new agricultural practices. Would be subject to, and then letter B talks about a native vegetation buffer, so it would depend on what, what designation we're talking about. So whatever designation that, that this land is in. That, that buffer would apply to new agriculture. And yeah, so, so native vegetative buffer consistent with that of the environment designation in which the use is occurring. Shall be permanently maintained between new agricultural activities and the ordinary high watermark of the shoreline or wetlands. Make that a little bigger.
Although I'll be classified either one of those.
It, it, it's, it's similar to all these other uses and modifications that are in the chapter, so it, you know, the first place you need to start. Is, okay, what, what environment am I, am I in? Because the development standards, all the permit standards and then the development standards may vary depending on which environment you're in. And we know those buffers vary, there's a much smaller buffer for some designations versus others.
See there? Animal feed, feeding operations. If they do it, that needs to be mitigated. As far as I'm concerned, on a shoreline, you can't, you don't have feed stocks. And there's no mitigation that you could do to. Mitigate against the manure and phosphorus and all the stuff that would go into the water body from a feedlot.
Yeah.
And we have a significant phosphorus issue with all of our lakes and rivers.
So, and that's going to go back to the information that's provided at application, right? And. You know, if someone's going to want to put something like that in, it's going to have to. They're going to have to demonstrate that the shoreline ecological functions, that there's no net loss. And I would say with something like that, with a large operation like that, there's going to be zoning issues as well. There's, it's not just going to be able to be put anywhere. The underlying zone would have to allow that type of use.
I'm just saying, having it in here and say that you can mitigate for it is. For me, it's not acceptable because I know what it does to the water quality.
Okay.
Well, I would argue that when you're talking about confined animal feeding operations, that's actually a USDA term. And it's pretty heavily regulated. That's why, I mean. Darius now have lagoons, they have liners, they get told when they can and can't spread manure, I mean. The, the whole idea is that if you've got a actual confined animal feeding operation. They aren't going to let you get away with any kind of leakage into the waterway.
No, they're not there all the time. I, I just don't think it has a place on the shoreline. I mean, a lot of other things we say can't be built on the shoreline. This is one of them that is a, that is a significant. Potential catastrophe.
I'm looking at my notes here. I, and I, I have to, I would want to re-verify this, but I have a, I made notes that said that we are not able to prohibit specific types of agricultural activities. I, I don't have any other context for that statement that I wrote down, so I'm not remembering exactly where that came from. But also that the confined animal feeding operations would appear not to be exempt. From the SDP under state law, so there's going to be a permit that's required, you know, that, that it's going to be reviewed. But you know, I can, I can look into that more if planning commission wants me to or wants to recommend some specific language, you know, we can. Do that exercise of having you all. Tell me what to, where to steer here.
Anybody else nodding their heads?
I'm trying to pick my screen bigger so I can see all of you. So. What, what, what say, what say others?
I'm kind of with, I would be interested in knowing if we're even, like, if we're even allowed to. Impact what other, what farmers do. I think Scott might be right on this, that we, we can't tell a farmer he can do something on one part of his field, but not on another part of this field. So we at least had an answer if we're even allowed to, that would be, that would be good to have.
I know that there are some specific provisions. There's some specific things in state law that regulate how, you know, the critical areas ordinance and how the SMP are even able to address agriculture. It's fairly prescriptive. So I can go back and look at that. Because I, like I said, I did have a comment that I wrote down here saying that we cannot prohibit specific types of agriculture, so I want to run that back to ground. Okay, well, I can do that.
Andy, just editing deal. Confined animal feeding operations is an actual title, so all those words should be capitalized. And then it usually we refer to them as CAFOs, C A F O.
Right, yeah, I didn't want to just start throwing that acronym around without explaining it, but yeah, you're right. Okay, let me make a note there. If we end up keeping that specific language. Okay. Okay. So I will look more into that for us, for you. Anything else in agriculture in section 110 here?
Under B. Explain, it's the third line, a fence shall be installed at the outer buffer edge. Separate water bodies from livestock. What is the outer buffer edge? Does that mean, let's say 50 feet from the water, or does it mean at the? Or high watermark?
It means the furthest landward that the buffer extends, that the buffer extends. So if you have a, if you have 150 foot buffer on ordinary high watermark. That fence would be 150 feet from the ordinary high watermark. It would be to protect the buffer. From. Yeah, protect the buffer from, from any impact from those activities.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted clarification. That's what I thought, but. The other way around too.
Yeah. Okay.
And under F, how do you monitor that?
I'm not sure off the top of my head. Potentially by demonstrating or, or showing the rates that which they would be applied. And also any potential measures that are in place to prevent runoff from reaching. Water bodies. So what are the, what are the management practices that are being used? That's, that's my guess. I'm not exactly sure how they would demonstrate that.
Does G answer that question?
Yeah, I think G is intended to answer that.
Oh, there you go. Okay. Okay, great. So yeah, so there's information they're going to be required to present to us or to the planners that are reviewing this. To determine that it meets everything that's in that section. Yeah. Okay. So if there's nothing else in 110, we can move into 115, which is our aquaculture section. I imagine we may spend, spend some time here. Does anyone have anything off the top for the aquaculture section?
The. Under one, would we, is it SDP or it's? Isn't one of them require a conditional use permit?
Yes, new gooey duck aquaculture does, and that's per state law, and so number three under letter A addresses that.
New commercial, okay. And what? Under the one again exemption if definition of substantial development section, da, da, da. That just means that as long as it's less than $7,047, they're exempt, right?
I would think so. I'd have to zip right up to what.
That's what the definition says.
Yeah. Oh, is it? Okay. Let me see if I can find that real quick. Here we go. Okay, and this, oh, here we go. Okay, on September 15, the amount was increased. Yeah, so it's, it's current. Yeah, so that's right. So it's saying. It would be exempt if it is not considered substantial development. So, and that, that's sort of the caveat for a lot of these things, right? Where potentially. If, if, if it doesn't meet the definition of substantial development, it's going to be exempt from. From that permit requirement. It doesn't mean other permits may not be required, but. Or that other development standards don't apply, but yeah. And I, I'm guessing that that was, so that's the red text, which means it was an edit that was made before my time on the project, but I'm guessing that was just made to clarify that specific. Statement there, right? That this says an SDP is required, but there could be conditions where. Where it would not be if it does not meet the definition of substantial development. So. Okay.
Under 3A. If you're converting an existing aquaculture to a commercial gooey duck aquaculture, can you explain that to me? I mean, you have an existing one, you're converting it to the same thing, right?
So, yeah, and I, I believe that is intended to be, if, if you're already. Aquaculture operation, but you're going to start growing gooey duck. That's when the administrative conditional use permit would be applied and state law makes that. Deference to local jurisdictions and says that local jurisdictions can decide. It's up to us or up to, you know, the decision makers of the county as to whether administrative cup would be. Applied or, or not, whether it's going to be a full cup or an administrative conditional use permit. And, and as we've discussed, I mean, that concept applies to a lot of these uses we're talking about. It's, it's the county's. Jurisdiction to set that up, how, how we want the permitting to, to work, whether things are going to be administrative or whether they're going to be hearing examiner. But this is saying, if it's gooey duck, it's going to need a conditional use permit. The level of conditional use permit, you know, is, is discretionary to the local jurisdiction.
I guess what I don't understand is existing aquaculture. Converted to commercial gooey duck. I mean, if it's existing, what do you, I don't know what you're converting to.
So maybe you were growing mussels or oysters or some other type of clam. And now you're going to do gooey duck. So there's different, different methods of cultivating these different species. And as you know, different case law and things that have come down that talk about. The development standards and the permitting that needs to be applied to those.
Okay.
Right.
Guess on, for me, Andy, on that same one, on. I'm all for administrative wherever we can, but this seems like maybe we're doing apples to oranges. And are there different requirements to? Become gooey duck farmers compared to something that's above the water where maybe you're doing like mussels on. I don't know, I don't know how that works, but is it? I don't know, maybe it needs a little bit more than administrative in some cases.
And that is certainly up for the planning commission to discuss. I mean, generally speaking, the more, the more impactful, the more. High profile or controversial a project is, I mean, that, those are, tend to be the things that, that elevate to that conditional use permit. Status, you know, so that is up for the planning commission to discuss and there is some, you know, general guiding language in the wax that talks about when you would potentially. Want to use a conditional use permit versus, versus not require that. And that's something that, you know, we can certainly explore.
I, I don't want to be contrary to Jim here, but I, I just feel that. That the county is kind of the last outfit to look at a gooey duck operation. So even if they were doing. Oysters and bags on beach or even hanging bags or anything like that beforehand, and then they want to convert to gooey duck. The conversion to gooey duck isn't just going to the county and asking for permission. They're still going to the Army Corps of Engineers, they're still going to ecology and fish and wildlife and. The conversion is a pretty lengthy process already, and so then. And with tons of oversight, so then to get down to the county and have the county repeat all that same oversight again, doesn't seem. Productive to me. It seems like a waste of the applicant's time and of the county's time, since all this stuff is still going to be looked at by every federal and state agency beforehand.
Yeah, and to piggyback on that, just for, yeah, for everyone to keep in mind in general here, there are. Provisions in this chapter or this section that, that state, you know, for the information that you have created for another application for federal approval or other state approval. You know, can be used to apply here. We're not asking people to, to recreate the wheel when they apply with us. It's, it's just a question of how is that oversight being? Managed? Is it going to be county staff? Is it going to be a hearing examiner? But at the end of the day. Anything with the, with the CUP in it is going to require ecology approval before, before that use is allowed to go forward. So whether staff reviews it or whether the hearing examiner reviews it, the applicant is not able to proceed with their project until ecology approves it.
I'm, I'm comfortable with the administrative since there's already so much oversight on gooey duck operations.
And that's the other thing I wanted to thank you to, yeah, make sure we're keeping in play here with this specific use is that there are a lot of agencies that, that touch this. So that's just for general context.
Thanks, Eric, for clarifying for me. I'm, yeah, I'm administrative, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
The typo in number four, it's exemption, second line exemption criteria in section 19500, 100. Instead of at.
Yeah, sure, that, I'm.
I don't know whether you want us to point those things out.
Uh, yeah, that's fine. And you know, unless anyone in the planning commission objects, I'm happy to flag that and change that. That's no problem. Go back and do that later, so I don't, you don't have to watch me change text color and underline and all that fun stuff. Okay. So I'm going to keep going. I know that this is a section that there may be a lot of comment in, so maybe I'll just kind of. Scroll down and we'll take it section by section. So anything in section B, which is the application requirements?
I've got under, under two and probably three, I guess. Aren't we really saying? Shall be in. Included if not already part of information submitted for another federal or state agency? Isn't that what you just said earlier? I mean, we've got all this information that they've already submitted to. Corps of Engineers and everybody else, but. Aren't we really saying that they have, if, if they haven't provided this information for other agencies, then you have to do it.
Well, and even if they have provided for, for other agencies, they can, they can send it to us and we have it, then you know, they're just forwarding us what they sent to those other agencies. But I think the language at, at the top of section B here governs for all, all of this. So in addition to, you know, the minimum permit requirements for any shoreline application in 105C. Applications shall include the following information, if not already provided in the local state or federal permit application. So we say that right at the top. If you, if you did not include it, we're saying we, we need this, so. I'm not sure, I don't recall the history behind number two here and why it was changed to what it is, but. At the top of the section there, it's pretty clear that you, you got to give us this if you, if you didn't already develop it. But then we're saying here, you know, the following should be included if you've already provided it. And you know, where applicable, so. I'm not, I, I'm not recalling why it was changed from shall to should. But at the end of the day, you know, the, the, the approval authority, which is the, you know, the director is. Design, or his designee is able to require anything in here if we need it.
Yeah, it just seems like the, it, it seems double positive or double negative or. It's confusing to me anyway, so I understand what we're trying to get at, I just. it's confusing to me anyway. So I understand what we're trying to get at. I just I'm reading it funny ways, I guess.
Yeah, and we also say um at the top, uh you know, that that sentence at the top or the paragraph, rather, says that where requested information is not applicable. The applicant is not required to include it as long as they can demonstrate why and that we say, yeah, that that makes sense. You don't have to do that. Um, so it's all there. Uh. Yeah, so I don't know if you're proposing or anyone is proposing changes to the text, but, you know, it it's covered up above certainly.
Just at the end of that opening paragraph, the application requirements would be with concurrent from the department, maybe just to be most confusing department of fish and wildlife or ecology or whoever.
So department means uh community planning and economic development and that that would that's not. Uh, but that that is what that means is is uh community planning and economic development, and I I think you're gonna see reference to department uh throughout the document. But I can check to make sure that it's uh defined as such.
Is that stated somewhere in the glossary or somewhere?
It should be. That's what I'll go. I will verify that. Uh, it's either gonna be there or it's gonna be in the interpretation section of chapter one hundred. Uh, but that's that's pretty standard uh in terms of uh code writing. So I'll verify that it's there. It very much should be. It's just a space saving thing as we move through and we don't have to use an acronym and we don't have to say.
The idea that, you know, for code writers and people that are, you know, that are behind the desk, but for like me, it sounds very, it's like, I don't care. Have to do this stuff. So I just think you need to be clarified what the department is.
Yeah.
I agree. Make it simpler for the our people who are trying to use it. They don't have to go look someplace else.
So uh how do the rest of folks feel? Uh, cause I'm, this is what we're doing. We're recording any any changes you want. So if 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 that's what the planning commission would like me to do, I'm happy to to do that.
Uh, I think the only concern I would have about actually putting CPED there is that in the last ten years, it's been called at least three different things.
Yeah.
We leave it at department. It's department. If we change it, we have to go every time the commissioners decide they want to change the name. We've got to go through and change all every place where it says the CPED.
And if you, so I scrolled back up to the the definition section. We already had to change it during the update from resource stewardship to community planning or economic development or as amended. So, yeah, to Scott's point, um, using the word department throughout the document uh limits the amount of revision that would potentially be needed, you know, during the next update of this document. Um, we would, you only have to catch it in a few spots, but I I do also understand that um, you know, to people who don't use this every day and live in this every day, it's department of what, you know, I I understand that that as well. So um, I will leave it to you all as to whether you want me to change it or do something else. But I mean, that just think that that's a cascading change that would potentially go through the document because that word department is going to be used throughout to refer to community planning and economic development.
I don't want to have forty seven different places to change it, but the public would understand if you said the planning department. Keep it simple.
Yeah. But and and we can, I can certainly talk about that with with Jennifer, um, and see if there's any options we can come up with that are more descriptive, but also don't, you know, take up a lot of real estate there. But is that something that um a lot of you would like me to do? No, I'm not seeing, can't see Dawn. It's not clear to me if that's something I should move forward on or not.
I'm indifferent. I don't care.
Okay, Dawn, what do you think? You're you're muted. Dawn, did you have any specific thoughts on that? If you wanted to unmute and let us know, otherwise I can move on.
Yeah, just having a reference department, if it if it applies to a whole bunch of different spots, the change itself would become burdensome. So maybe just leave it.
Okay.
Or reference the uh the definition.
Okay. All right, uh, well, maybe we can noodle on that. Um, but I'm not getting a huge huge reaction. All right, let me get us back up to where we were. Sorry for the scrolling. Okay. All right. Okay, is there anything else uh that folks wanted to address in letter B, which is the application requirements for aquaculture operations?
Yes, under, no, I got, yeah. The uh three I. Again, here we're um anticipative use of any feed, herbicides, antibiotics, vaccines, growth stimulants, anti-fouling agents or other chemical assessments of predicted. I mean, we're asking them if, you know, if they got to provide information on it. Well, as far as I'm concerned for lakes and what, I mean, this is about gooey ducks, but we still don't, we know what it, what hormones do in the water system. And it's not good.
Yeah, and I don't know how much as a local jurisdiction, we have the bandwidth to really regulate that um versus, you know, there are other other oversight overseers, right? All the other state and federal agencies that oversee aquaculture, which would play a more direct role in that. So we're we're asking for that piece of the puzzle, but um that's not necessarily the focus of the county. So I don't know. I don't know what I don't know what kind of what the lanes are, what the bandwidth is for the county to potentially condition or change uh operations based on that information. I'd have to look into that. Um. But, you know, I I would go back to the the main tenants, which are that, you know, properly managed. This is a uh it's a preferred use of the shoreline. There's other oversight from other agencies and, you know, that's that's just not within the county's normal, you know, area of expertise. So uh certainly up for discussion and, you know, I'm happy to go and look at that if folks want me to do so, but I'm not sure exactly how much impact we can have on on that directly.
I hate to have you spend a bunch of time on it if we have absolutely no impact. It's just that when you dump chemicals in, you know, Thurston County is pretty um strict in its own use of chemicals and has a whole pest and vegetation advisory committee that looks at all these things before you can, the county can actually do them, but you're not doing it through the county. You're doing it through the state. You can do a lot of other things.
Uh, I would say it would probably not be. Frankly, I would probably just write the write the question up and send it straight to ecology and ask for their take on it. Um. I don't think that would take a super long time. Um, so I I would, again, I would look to the rest of the body and see if this, if that's something you want me to dive in on. You know, and I'm happy to do so. So anything else in letter B? What? I will move us forward into letter C, which is the development standards. And this is gonna we've got general development standards, and then there's further ones for the different, uh, I think there's specific things for for gooey duck as well. Um, okay, so let's let's hear any comments or thoughts on uh letter C.
On uh I guess it would be the second B, the first black B. When it's we're talking about uh uh not having to get a new permit as long as they are continuing to to farm. And then uh continued operations. And it has a list of things here that are included but not limited to, and I understand what not limited to means, but then we call out specifically maintenance, harvest, replanting, restocking or changing the culture. Um, I would also like in those those specific things that are called out to add one more, and that is is if they are leaving their land or their farms fallow. I mean, we have, we've gone through this before when we're talking about about agriculture, that fallow lands are important and uh integral part of farming. And I think leaving um aquaculture lands fallow at times is something that should be specifically called out as part of a uh part of their continued operation, especially since there's a lot of things, I mean, those water quality can go to crap on an operator and they don't replant for a year, and I'd hate for them to have to come back and try to go through the whole permitting process again for something that was totally outside their control.
Uh, and there are potential other factors that could influence their ability to plan as well um that are outside of their control. And I think I'm, I've read the aquaculture chapter of the SFP handbook enough times to to know. I I think there is some language in there that that makes acknowledges that. And so that I I am fairly confident that is something that we could or that you could put in here. Uh, I think there's precedent for it. I think other other SMPs have done it. So.
I would like to see it specifically called out, just so that way it's not a fight on the other end. If it's if it's in there specifically, then nobody's gonna have to fight about it later to whether or not fallows really protected operation.
Mm hmm. Okay. Um, well, the first, yeah. And so the first thing I'm gonna do in this section is mark that I need to re- renumber it or re-letter it because there should not be two letter Bs. So thanks for pulling that out. Better. Um, okay, and so uh so what do other folks think about that? Uh, so I would be looking to either in this spot or or I can also make sure that there isn't a better spot to put that if if that's the concern. Um, is that something that the planning commission would like me to to do?
I would. I did. Wherever you put it, just make sure that if they, if they have a period where it's dormant, that it's okay.
Okay. Uh, and I think, like I said, I think there is some language for me to go off of in the SMP handbook. Um, so that that should be relatively easy, but like I said, I will take a look to see exactly where that should should go, because I would think um, that would potentially be something that would uh, wanna make it clear that would not necessarily just be um for new new operations issued under this SMP with, you know, moving forward from the effective date. That would be something that potentially should be retroactive for existing operations as well, because it, you know, that would make sense. Um, okay, hang on one sec. Great. Yep, so that's, okay. Can do. All right, um. So continue through the development standards here. Um, what else do folks have?
The only comments I had on the next section basically is how are we monitoring this stuff? I guess we're not, huh? Whether somebody has identifying marks on their on the products they put in the ground and how do you make sure they're doing it?
Right.
And I.
Uh, letter, you say letter I?
Yeah.
Okay, right. Yeah, and I'm trying to remember. So there's two different considerations here, right? One would be uh after they're permitted, uh, does anyone go out and actually verify that, you know, that it was built to the operation was built and installed to the permit and then ongoing any monitoring in the future, right? I am not sure what level of, sometimes we call that the as-bill, right? You go out and it it was designed or, you know, it's built to the standards that were identified in permit. Um, I'm not sure if we do that with aquaculture or not. Um, and that's something that planning commission could explore. It's gonna come down to, you know, what is the staff availability to do so? And what are the, what are our legal requirements to to do so as well? Um, but yeah, I don't that's a long-winded way of saying I'm not sure that we do. Um. And I don't, if it's not called out here that we're going to do it in the document, then, you know, I don't know that it's going to happen. So that may be something that you wanna discuss.
Does that apply to K as well?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, so to my knowledge, uh, there are not the county does not have the resources to do ongoing uh maintenance or, excuse me, ongoing monitoring of of aquaculture operations or a lot of of shoreline land uses, right? Once the permit is issued, we don't necessarily um go out and just do monitoring. Um, other other agencies do. There are other agencies that have oversight on aquaculture that do have monitoring programs, but the county, to my knowledge, we do not. Um, a lot of our monitoring is observation driven, as you know, as you kind of heard tonight from the it's issues are brought to our attention, and that's when the county goes out and looks and sees whether the the permit conditions are being violated or not.
I guess the question is, do we don't need a whole bunch of different agencies monitoring this? If there is somebody doing it, then the county doesn't need to.
Well, everyone's, they're all looking for their own pieces of things, right? So they're not gonna necessarily, if ecology is out there or um, you know, DNR or the tribe or something like that, they're not necessarily looking for whether they are complying with our permit conditions. I know at one point, uh, I brought back information to the planning commission about uh the different agencies that do go out and monitor. So we could, I could, you know, pull that back up for the next meeting or something. Uh, but yeah, I don't know that we are gonna have monitoring on that. So that could be potentially something the planning commission wants to discuss, uh, suggesting, and, you know, it could we could float it up and see what happens, but you know, as written, I'm not confident that that is going to be a requirement.
You don't, I mean, it's no different than anything else, and you don't go out and inspect ongoing businesses either.
Well, and planning does not, right? But, you know, like the health.
Yeah, there's nothing to do it, but the only one I'm concerned about is making sure that they comply with the permit.
Right.
They get when they're first started.
Yeah, and I that's gonna be a broader issue that, you know, we would have to take forward and work with current planning on how they're gonna, how they would do that if that became a requirement. But uh, I'm recalling from my, the last time I asked about it, it's not something that we currently do. So um, I guess that's my question to you and, you know, looking to everyone, is that is that a topic that you want to dive deeper into and uh get some sort of assessment on uh the feasibility of doing some sort of monitoring of the permit conditions? I also think I would add in this case here, uh, if it if it's, we're talking about gooey duck. Again, it's ecology that is going to be approving the whatever permit the county issues that conditionally use permit. So I could also see whether they do any um, any of that as well, because they're the ones who are approving it.
That'd be good.
Okay, I can, so that I can ask about, but so is this something that you guys want me to look into further of having the feasibility of having a Thurston County uh permit, you know, check uh to make sure that the operation was installed to permit? I see Doug nodding.
I'm not sure that that's necessary. I think that that uh neighborhood watch and neighbors that are notice something drastically wrong are gonna complain, and then then you can send somebody out, but to have somebody be there as an aquaculture police, I don't know that that's necessary.
Well, we we do it for the residential homework. They send somebody out to inspect everything. If they find anything that's wrong, nail them.
I I agree they do during the permit process, but you don't go out and inspect somebody's house just because they You don't go out and inspect somebody's house just because they got a house.
Oh, yeah, no, that's what I'm saying is.
So that's, that's the distinction I would make too, there's, we're talking about two different things, so what I, what I understood Doug to be asking about was. Whether there would be something analogous to what we do for single family homes before you're allowed to occupy, we say, you know. Up to building code, did you build it in the box, and does it look the way it's supposed to look? I don't know that we currently do that for aquaculture, so that's what I took him to mean, is doing something like that, so you you know, you 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 get your approval, you go ahead and you install your tubes. Or your nets and whatever you're doing, and then someone comes out and says, you know, this is where it's supposed to be on the property, does it line up, and you know, do you have all your appropriate things in place? Are your, is your gear marked, you know, all those sorts of things, and then you're off to the races, and then. So there's that piece versus any sort of ongoing monitoring that would happen on a, you know. Semi annual basis or something like that, so I think that's two different distinct issues.
Right.
Yeah, and so I, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, just, I mean, as long as we're doing analogies here, instead of using analogy, like we do inspections on. New construction of single. Family homes, do we do any kind of inspections on any other kind of farming?
Yeah, I'm not sure, and again, we don't see a whole lot of farming permits. Existing ongoing things, and the however, caveat being new structures are still subject to, you know, building permits and all that.
Go out and check to see if crops went over property lines, or if they're, you know, what kind of. Pesticides they are actually applying with, if they're checking, if they're using something off label or anything like that, or what level of scrutiny do we give other farmers?
Right. I'd have to look into that.
I think in general. You know, our whole, our enforcement system is a complaint based system. So that's pretty much what brings the county out to. Look into a problem, is if we receive a complaint. We're not out there actively with drones monitoring folks' activities on the ground.
I think that's a more effective use of county resources.
And I agree.
So, okay, not not to parse the issue to you finally, but I I did want to bring resolution to Doug's initial comment, which was. Not an ongoing maintenance or monitoring situation, but simply going out, having county staff going out and verifying that things were installed. As the permit says they should be installed, whether there's interest in having us do anything like that. And I know Doug says yes, that I'm interested in what the rest of folks would say.
I guess my question would be, are there any other agencies that are gonna do the same thing?
Some will for their own purposes, but again, I don't think that other agencies are gonna be policing the county's shoreline master program. And our, you know, local permits. Okay, well, I. Think I'm gonna move on.
Yep.
Okay. All right, anything else here in letter C, the development standards?
Two D. Would there be a reason not to put, add to that statement and placed in service within X years?
Are you saying, so. Limiting the ability for that conditional use permit to cover operations that, putting a time limit on that, right, this permit will cover. Other uses, or excuse me, additional, you know, grows in this bay, provided that it's done within X timeframe, is that right?
Yes. Question and seeing what other people think, I.
Yeah, so, and the, so. Don't know, but I do know that all these standards here for. Personal gooey duck aquaculture are straight from the whack, these are things that we need to have. Have in here, so can certainly look into see whether we can modify that, or whether it's gonna be a, nope, you gotta have it say what it says. But I don't, I'm not sure. I mean, I think we do put some limits on. Or we do have some language that talks about the length that the permit is valid after you get it issued, so potentially, if you know you're gonna be doing. An operation in the near future, and you're not ready to actually install it now, you have a certain amount of time after your permit is issued to actually go out and. Do the work before that permit expires, and I would imagine. The, all the other approvals that you need from other agencies are gonna have their own windows of validity, so that's one means of potentially handling what you're. Talking about there.
Andy, if you go back to. The general, the general standards, at the bottom of page ninety five, the B that we talked about does put a five-year limit on it.
Okay. Okay.
With the possibility of an extension.
Right. So that gives five years, Doug, does that address that?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, before we leave this section, I did wanna come back and just, just talk a little bit about the issue of plastics in aquaculture. So I know that there has been interest from the planning commission in the past in looking at that, and whether specifically the the the. Research question that I took away from a past meeting was whether the county can encourage operators to reduce or limit the use of plastics in aquaculture. And so, just to go take it out to a thirty thousand foot view, you know, the state's SMP guidelines recognize that aquaculture is preferred use of the shoreline. When it's consistent with control pollution and prevention of damage to the environment, it's also noted as an activity that is of statewide interest. And, you know, jurisdictions, we have to develop regulations for aquaculture, and the wax do provide us guidance in doing so. And so, as you know, and what we're going through now, the SMP includes those regulations for for aquaculture. You've, I'm sure everyone has heard about the plastic pollution in, you know, our water bodies and everywhere, plastic is everywhere. So plastics in the marine environment are certainly an environmental concern, and there's a whole lot of research that's out on that topic, and those plastics can come from. All host sources, right, if if there's plastic that gets in water, it's gonna make its way. Downstream, so that comes from, you know, the clothes that we wash and our tires and, you know, all sorts of things. So unfortunately, you know, in looking at the wax, they're silent on this issue, I I did not find any guidance really on. Plastics for for aquaculture, the SMP handbook does note that. Items that are used for aquaculture have been observed to float off site, so potentially you can have, you know. Gear that's associated with your operation leave the site, and that's, that's where the requirements for marking that gear and doing patrols for any lost gear come into play. But from what I was looking for, I was not able to find scientific consensus on the role of aquaculture in contributing to plastic pollution in the marine environment. There's just not a conclusive enough body of data out there for us to say, you know, this specific use is causing this specific problem, and so looking at the. The legal issues, so the shoreline hearings board has heard several, several issues, or several cases about aquaculture for on a whole host of issues, and plastics are among them. And that specific issue has been litigated, and it it lost, there was not, the petitioners did not meet their burden of proof with the shoreline hearings board. To have aquaculture limited with respect to plastic, and you know, there's also the nationwide permit forty eight with the Army Corps of Engineers, we all know that. That permit was invalidated in the state of Washington, and one of the reasons for that is that. They did not adequately address the issue of plastics in in aquaculture permitting, but that's not to say that. It was found in that invalidation that the plastics are a significant issue, and that, you know, they need to change the way aquaculture operations. Operate, it said that you didn't do your homework, Army Corps, in in demonstrating that there's, you know, no adverse effects. From issuing these permits, so. One thought that that I had is that, you know, it's. Would not necessarily be the right move to put restrictions on one type of shoreline use with respect to plastics, but if that's an issue that the planning commission is interested in taking up. As I mentioned, you know, any, there are multiple different uses that are covered by the SMP, and multiple ways that plastic can enter the marine environment, and it might be. Something that you wanna take a look at some more global language, or, you know, if there's gonna be encouragement to limit use of plastics, look at that for more holistically and and throughout the SMP. Versus one specific. Use such as aquaculture here, so a couple meetings ago, you asked me to dive in on that, that's, that's what I have to report on that issue, and just to come back and close the loop on that. So any questions on that?
When we talk about the county encouraging. Either through a goal or a policy statement. What kind of legal? Muscle does that have?
Yeah, I don't think it has a lot, I think the the. Way to encourage and have that be meaningful would potentially be to explore incentives. You know, if if someone can demonstrate, and I'm gonna go out on a limb here and not not commit us to anything, but you know. Explore some sort of expedited permit approval, or is there some sort of discount on fees if you can show that you're, you know. Plastic friendly shoreline use or something like that, I I don't know, and and again, it's it, but whatever it is, it needs to. It needs to be applied holistically, because we can talk about this broad issue of plastics and marine environment and wildlife, but. You know, the the science is just not there to to narrow it in on on one specific use, but yeah, so. Incentives potentially, but other than that, it's just gonna be the county recognizing that, you know. Less plastic in the environment is a good thing, and encouraging. Others to to take that up. Kind of like we did with the, we're looking at the agriculture language, right, you know, if if we can't regulate people to do something. Then potentially we can encourage them to to do it, so. That's what I would say there.
Well, I don't, I don't mind the county encouraging people to get away from plastics, but I I certainly don't want the county to all of a sudden. Tell operators that they can't use plastics, and then the county involved in multimillion dollar lawsuits to fight something that's already been fought before and lose.
And that's what I'm saying, yeah, we we don't wanna go there, so if it, and I was, I'm saying, the research question came from. You know, a previous discussion about aquaculture, and who's to say it wouldn't have been generated down the lines we moved through the document, but. If 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 the concern is the role that plastics writ large play in pollution of our whole environment, then, you know, that encouragement to use. Plast, or to reduce the use of plastics needs to not be focused on one specific section of the SMP. And maybe there's a a general goal that could be introduced in chapter three hundred, that's where the goals and policies of the whole document are housed, that might be a way to. To address that concern. So.
And that's what I had suggested when we were in that chapter, that would be the place to put it in it's, and do it only as. Guidance long term, it's not a black and white thing now, or. As science develops, improves, you know, or whatever, we ought to look towards eliminating classes.
So there might be, and I'm. Not having memorized all of chapter three hundred, there may be a general goals and policies where that would would fit, and having some sort of initiative or. Statement about, you know, the evolving. Evolving nature of commercial products, right, and you know, if if something is demonstrated to be of better. Lower impact on the environment, then then Thurston County is all for that, people using that, if that's something they wanna do. And it's not something that we can, if it's not something we can require and or do require. So I think that, you know, if that's. Something planning commission is interested in, I could look at drafting something for you to react to when you see the public hearing draft. Is that something you'd like me to look into? Eric, Don, okay, great, so I will, I will do that, write that down. Okay. So I'm gonna continue. Moving on through the developments, or the, yeah, the development standards here for aquaculture. And are there any additional questions or comments? This is something here that still needs to be resolved. Is the standards for net pens? You know. This language, I think, potentially came from another SMP and was not necessarily developed specifically for Thurston County's waters. So there's potentially some work that needs to be done as to whether there are appropriate net pen standards for. For Thurston County, or whether we should remove it, or how we would proceed there, and so I'm curious if planning commission has any. Any thoughts there?
I I don't think the net pin issue is going to be solved on. On a county level, I think that the fight over net pins is gonna happen on the state level, on any effort that we put into net pins is gonna be moot.
Right, and we did put language in here. Yeah, where did we do that? Okay, yeah, so basically, new floating net pens can only be used for species that are native to Washington State. And then existing net pen operations with non-native species can convert to native species, but yeah, we are not allowing any new. Non-native net pen operations, or net pen operations for non-native species, and that directly goes to everything that's happening at the state level. As you referenced.
I'm good with that.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, if there's no specific. Guidance on that, then I mean, that's just something that that's outstanding for staff to look at and. Make a proposal on.
And you'd, in the last draft, you had said you were working with ecology on this, I just assumed you, and you took it out of this draft, so.
Well, it's not out, it's still here, but when working with them, that's, those are sort of the options that were identified, was, you know, the development standards that are here. Are not necessarily. Specific to Thurston County, right, they were lifted from another SMP when this SMP was drafted, and so ecology's comments were either take it out. Or modify it, like, look at the, look at the net pen projects that have actually been permitted in Thurston County and developed some standards based on whatever. Based on the standards that were used for those operations, and of course, you know, making sure that. They are in line with the shoreline guidelines and and all of that, or that we should, and that we should also look at the inventory and characterization. And determine where those net pens may be appropriate based on our existing shoreline conditions, and so that's the work that that. Needs to get put in here, and so I'm just wondering if if planning commission had any specific thoughts on that on top of that.
Andy, do we, do, does Thurston County have any either non-native or native species net pins at all, any?
We do, I think in Totten inlet, there's at least one. But it's not, it's not a a big, it's not a big driver of aquaculture in Thurston County. Yeah, most of our aquaculture is is tideland. So, and there's also, there's also floating raft aquaculture, there's some of that out in Totten inlet as well, the the muscle rafts and things like that. I think there is at least one. Net pen, but. I'll look at that, because this needs to be, this is an issue that needs to be decided upon before this is all. All said and done. So. Okay.
I have to admit, I I really don't know what the issue is with net pins, you read all about all a whole bunch of stuff, but, I mean, if you have any references for me to. Go look at what negatives and positives and. Whatnot in that terms, I appreciate it.
Sure, yeah, and they are, I mean, so because they occur in the shoreline jurisdiction in the aquatic environment, that's why they're a use that. That is regulated by by state law and by master programs, they recently got a lot of attention because of those issues that happened up in the North Sound with the. Failure of the the gates. On a a non-native enclosure, and there were a bunch of, they might have been Atlantic salmon, it was some sort of non-native salmon species that was being cultivated there, and a whole bunch of them. Escaped, and that has led to some changes that are happening at the state level relative to to net pen aquaculture. So it it does have a little bit of of, it has, well, it has a significant spotlight on it, I would say, just based on what's happened in the past. It's less of an issue for us in Thurston County, just because we don't see a lot of it, but, you know, we wanna make sure that we have appropriate regulations for that. If we, if we see applications for that, and and indeed if it, if it's appropriate for us to have that here.
Have we gotten any comment from a net pin operator during this SMP update process?
No, I, I'm not sure. I mean, I've certainly received comments from the, the aquaculture industry in general, but whether any of those comments have specifically focused on these regulations, I'm not sure. I'm not recalling any.
Oh, uh, I guess what I'm getting to is if we might have one net pin and that net pin operator has never even commented on what's going on with the SMP. It's really hard for me to, um, think that we need to spend a lot of effort on this and maybe just take ecology's guidelines on this is the best way to go.
Yeah. Okay.
Remember you have a public hearing coming up, so there'll be more opportunity to hear from any net pin operators out there.
Well, I hope they show up and tell us what they think then.
Yeah. So in that, I mean, yeah, I'm going to go ahead and keep digging on this specific piece. But yeah, those are kind of the general options there is take it out. Or if you want to have something in there, you know, go back and look at your inventory characterization and, and also build it based on, you know, things that have been approved in the past as context. So, okay. All right. So I'm going to move on. So nineteen six hundred one twenty, which is barrier structures and in-stream structures. Are there any comments on this section? Once, twice. So move on to boating facilities. And one thing I'll note here, you'll see in the comments on the side of the screen there. I've moved your comments down from up in the table. So anything that you suggested in the table in terms of we would propose to see X type of permit for X type of use, I've moved it down so that we can have that while we're going through this. And have started doing the research into, you know, making sure that these things that you have proposed are, that we're able to do. So anything for boating facilities, which is going to be the larger, larger boating facilities for, it's five, five vessels and up essentially. It's not individual docks. It's not individual mooring structures for residential homes. It's, it's for your community or larger facilities. Doug, you're muted.
So it's for like 10 or more boats, like a mooring facility?
Five or more.
Five or more?
Five or more. And then we made the distinction between five to nine and 10 and up. So if, if you're talking about one to four boats, that's where the, you go down to 160, which is the mooring structures. Boating facility specifically per state law is for serving five or more boats. And so that, that language got put up at the top of the section to make it clear. And that ties back to state law. If you look at the, or excuse me, the state guidelines. If you look at the wax and their language for boating facilities, it's for five and up. And then they have additional language for peers and docs, which, you know, we can then apply that to the individual pieces. Okay. So any comments here?
Under B, we kind of get into an area where the water body makes a difference.
Yeah, I believe. And yeah, we've, we've talked about that a little bit. I think one that jumps to mind for me is the littoral drift in number two, which generally is for the marine environment. And that could be somewhere where that phrase could be put in this document, you know, just, uh, it's an application requirement for, in the marine environment, potentially we could, we could do that.
Just I'm also trying to think of where you would, in the lakes that we have in Thurston County, where would you have such a facility? Uh, you know.
Like a marina?
Yeah, I know, but it's too small for most of that.
Right. Well, perhaps, but you, I mean, you never know, right?
Right. You have to conclude it, but.
Right.
Can you, can you just put in some if applicable language?
Yeah. Um. Yeah. And I, there's probably, the exact phrase would be good to consider because we want it to be, uh, or maybe rather, rather than saying we're applicable. I know some of these other uses in this chapter have statements that say, if, you know, if the applicant can demonstrate it's not applicable and the department agrees, then they don't need to do it. That might be, that would be what I would recommend. Okay, Doug, how does it? Don nodding. So, okay. So why don't I do that? And then that would get it, that would, while not specifically addressing by name that we're talking about lake versus marine. I mean, that would, that would accomplish that, I think. Okay. See your faces are all in the way. Great. Okay. Moving on. So development standards.
I think the same comment goes for development standards.
Yeah. So I know, um, yeah, I mean, I would also certain, that is one way to potentially address this, this issue that, that keeps coming up about the different types of environments. But I would also be interested in, you know, as we're moving through specific language that, you know, would benefit from that differentiation as well. But yeah. So something like the yeah, the following standards shall apply to new boating facilities unless it doesn't apply, but hmm. Yeah, maybe. I'm not, and you're seeing my wheels turn in real time here. I'm not sure what the exact language is, but I think you could be on to something there. So I can at least mark that.
Actually, when I read all of these things again, Andrew, I'm actually sure that important here.
Okay. Well, that's why I'm saying, uh, again, I'm definitely want to hear about it as we move through the individual language. And if there is something that specifically applies to one environment versus the other, I mean, we can call that out. There's more than one way to do that. So, yeah. Okay. Well, then I'll, I'll take this out for now and let's just, if we need to revisit that, we can. But yeah, if, if you see examples of that in this section, by all means, let's talk about it. Yeah. Again, I see this letter G here talks about littoral drift, which is in the marine environment. But you know, that's not going to apply. Cause yeah. It's not going to apply to anywhere else, I don't believe. And that could be something so like a surgical fix here would be for letter G. When applicable comma, boating facility shall avoid impacts to littoral drift. And then it would be applicable in the marine environment.
Sure.
What did folks think about that? Is that, is that okay? Okay, great.
I think, but we, we've already set it up under application requirements. So I think we're covered there. I don't.
Yeah, well, that's. So these are general regulations that are going to apply everywhere. And so, uh, this is, so as part of the application process, you know, people are, they're going to have to demonstrate that they're not impacting the drift, right? Which is the movement of sediments and all those sorts of things in the marine environment. So you're right, it is, it is covered up above because they're going to be required to submit some things that get to this point of not having that impact, or if there, that impact is happening, mitigating it. Okay. Great. Well then let's, yeah, where we don't need to add words. I think that's, that's always good. That's good for readability and all that. So. Okay. Move on then. Anything else under letter C, the development standards? If not, uh, we can move into commercial development. Does anyone have anything for nineteen six hundred one thirty, commercial development?
Under two A, we, we talked before about having commercial development, if it's zoned commercial. Should we put something like that in here?
Well, so, uh, let's take a look down. Well, let's see. It's regardless, it's going to have to meet the zoning ordinance. I would have to scrub this section to see if that is an issue here or not. I know that's an issue in the industrial use section. And that's something I'm researching for you all. But I'm just looking to see if I can see it right now. Um. It doesn't look like we really discussed that at all. So there's no mention of zoning that I see here. But yeah, I mean, just because the SMP makes provisions for commercial uses on the shoreline does not mean that, um, that if, if it's in a zone that would not allow commercial use, then, then that application is not going to go anywhere. It needs to be allowed via zoning, um, in addition to being allowed in the master program.
But someone could maybe go get a variance. I, I don't know that process, but what they'd have to prove if they wanted to vary.
Or, well, I think it would potentially be, and I don't want to speak out of school here because I don't implement the zoning code that often at all really. But a special use permit potentially, something like that. It, it's not inconceivable. I don't know the exact mechanics without looking at it, but um. Let's see. So are you wanting to potentially introduce something in here that just puts?
I think of it more, it's probably taken care of with an SDP and a COP because you're going to have a public, you're going to have a public hearing, you're going to have a hearing, you need to hear an examiner and notifications to people around.
Presuming that that is what you, I, and I can't, I don't think you, the planning commission suggested any changes to that requirement for commercial. So as written, when you see COP, their conditional use permit, we would assume that that is a full conditional use permit with, which yes, would, would have a hearing examiner, public hearing and approval by ecology. So, okay. Nothing there. We'll move on to I think dredging and dredge disposal. Now, just so you all, just for housekeeping here, I did move down the conversation from last time, which was for dredge disposal general and then for ecological restoration and the, the planning commissions draw the r's on uh, how to proceed with permitting for that. Uh, I want to reorganize this section so that it matches the table up above. So it's going to, it'll look different the next time you see it, but as written right here, this, this section lumps them together. And based on the changes that you all have suggested, um, the standards are different for permit standards are different for dredging versus dredge disposal. So the table breaks it out up above. I want to break it out down here as well. So just drawing your attention to that. Okay.
Under A four. Could you explain what established navigation channels are?
Yeah. So this came from, so I put this up here because, because the standards down below already made that provision and talked about permitting. Uh, I figured it, it deserved a shout out up here with the permanent stuff rather than having people dig for it. So looking, scrolling down to letter C, uh, C four, so this talks about, yeah, ma- maintenance dredging, established navigation channels and basins shall be restricted to maintaining the previously dredged. Essentially the configuration that it's in now, um, and such activities are exempt from permit procedures when the proposals meet the criteria of normal maintenance or repair. So basically that's saying if, if, if you are, if it's a previously authorized or established navigation channel, it's platted or predates all that, you know, uh, that you can potentially maintain that without the use or without needing to get a permit. Now the standards still apply, right? All the standards still apply. And again, that dredge disposal is going to be the issue. Where are you going to be able to put that? Um, cause just because you can dredge and, you know, reestablish your channel doesn't mean you still have to deal with the materials. But this is saying, and, and then move back up here to letter A, it's saying, you know, you don't need to get an SDP as long as it is maintenance dredging.
Sure. So I guess what I was thinking is that we looked at, uh, Lake Lawrence last week, the last meeting. And they were talking about that, that channel went around Goat Island, which gave access to those homes. And it's obviously a navigational channel. We have one on Long Lake also for people to get from their house to the lake. Is that considered a navigation channel?
I believe so. Yeah, that, right. I don't think that there's, it's not, it's not saying, and you know, in Thurston County, I mean, I don't think we have the, we don't have a whole lot of navigation channels for like commercial navigation or anything like that. You know, we don't have barges coming up to, you know, that I'm aware of. So yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's navigation in the general sense and, you know, to include recreation slash, you know, existing residential uses, because I know that that, to use that example that you mentioned on Goat Island. I mean, that's been there for years, right? They've been using that for years as their access to that lake. And I think that canal is even, I believe it's on their original plat. Um, I'd have to verify that, but I, I have to believe it is, you know, identified, you know, going way back when. Um, and I'm working on some information for them about that because they have questions about. So this is relatively a lot more straightforward than what the current situation would be with the, you know, interplay with the SMP and the CAO and how, how that, um, those environments are designated in the current SMP. So I'm working on some information for them on the differences in current versus proposed and how that all shakes out. But yeah, I think it's navigation in the, in the broad sense is the intent.
It might be good to put it in definitions. It's not in definitions.
Navigation channel?
Yeah. I just don't want some, you know, because the only navigation channels we have is Boston Harbor, basically. I mean, that people would think of as navigational.
Yeah. And yeah, to clarify my statement I just made, I was thinking more about the lakes and the, the streams where we don't have a whole lot of big boats going up them for commercial purposes. Obviously we have, you know, a seaport in Olympia and there are other harbors and things like that where large boats go, but you know, that's largely relegated to the marine environment here.
People that have to, uh, fight over definition of navigational channels.
Right. Um, I, and I think that makes sense to me that, you know, if, if we're saying, if we are putting this provision in here that, uh, if you meet, if you are X, you don't need a permit. I mean, we need to define X. So that makes sense to me. Uh, what, what are the rest of the planning commission think? Yeah. Okay. Okay. Uh, and yeah, so define navigation channel. Let me actually write it in here where everyone can see it. And that might be the sort of thing where, yeah, it's just done for this section and just lumped right in here. And that might be the sort of thing where, yeah, it's just done for this section and just lumped right in here. Okay, great, I can work on that. Right. Moving on, anything else in section one thirty-five?
Yeah, I've got a question. Everything that I, I'm looking at it, everything seems to do basically maintain navigation. And I maybe, maybe the, we don't have any that are moving enough water, but what about maintenance of drainage ditches?
Are you are you thinking agriculture or other types of drainage dishes or, oh, I, I know, okay, yeah. So like for our ditch districts and all that sort of thing.
Yes.
Right? Yeah, I mean, that's a good thought.
Is the drainage ditch a shoreline?
It may not be, but it could be. Right?
That was my other question, I don't know if they, any of them move enough water to qualify.
But also, keep in mind that potentially portions of those, of those drainage ditches could be in shoreline jurisdiction, right, even if the, even if that dish itself doesn't meet the twenty cubic feet per second. Within the shorelands of a stream that it drains into, two hundred feet from the ordinary high watermark would be in SMP jurisdiction and also any associated wetlands or the floodplain with that stream that is in shorelines would be covered. So you could theoretically end up having a portion of your drainage ditch be subject to the SMP, and so I think, I think it's a good question. Are you, Scott, are you, in looking at this, are you, are you seeing that there's anywhere that would exclude this from applying to those?
Well, it seems to me everything in this says dredging for the purpose of a navigation channel.
Or ecological restoration, yeah, there's that too. I could certainly look at that and whether, I'm trying to think whether there's any other. So, you know, we're talking all the different uses and mods in the shoreline, I'm trying to think if there are any of the other categories in this chapter where drain it, or where drainage ditches would also. Yeah, if, whether we steal it here or whether it's, is there anywhere else that that addresses this, because if it doesn't mention it, I mean, I think that it, that might be good to call out, because, you know, we do have so many ditch, drainage ditches and district ditch districts in the county. And so for those.
Does that include stormwater outfalls?
That's what drainage ditch is, right?
Yeah, I'd, I'd want to go back and look at this, actually look at the definition of dredging too, how we, how we apply that, that might be instructive too.
So there's more than one issue here, one is do drainage ditches apply in the dredging section? And the other issue is, how do we address drainage ditches or stormwater drainage? Which is what I asked back on your standards. Because according to stream team, seventy-five percent of the pollution in, in our water comes from stormwater.
Right. But this is, so I would say that there's the concept of well. This is talking about dredging, though, so you're talking about dredging of stormwater outfalls?
Well, drainage ditches in this case, I mean, whether it's the outfall end of it or not, wherever it is.
Yeah.
Scott's question is valid, is that, is it in the SMP called?
Yeah.
We have dredging of retention detention ponds as well, do, do those fall under shoreline definition?
They could if they're within, if they're within the jurisdiction. And also, is it a, is it a just a retention pond, or is it like a, is it a wetland that, you know, has stormwater flow into it, right? Because then potentially those provisions would apply as well. But I mean, the answer is always going to be if, if, if you're physically located in shoreline jurisdiction, then the SMP would apply. So maybe that, that sounds like something that I should get some clarity on. I'm not so sure about the stormwater, like the outfalls, like I, Doug, I think you're, you're, it makes sense that, you know, things that are happening upstream and, you know, dredging in a ditch or something like that, but when it comes down to, I think, when I think outfalls, I think culverts, and I don't, is that what you're thinking?
Well, I think any of them, well, we talked about that back in the, in the appropriate section, and so when we get to that again, we, we can address it. Do some working of that section, so.
Yeah, and yeah, for the, for the public record here, I am working on a memo for you guys on shoreline, specifically, it's on shoreline stabilization related to lakes, and it does touch on water quality issues and things like that, and I will have that prepared for you for the March third meeting, and we'll get into that, because I'm, I'm thinking, yeah, I, I was not gonna have it today, and the product will be much better in two weeks, but you're right, we're gonna get there. Stuff coming up here. But yeah, let me, I'm just gonna take that down here to look into the, specifically the drainage ditch issue, and it might just be as simple as making a statement in here that it applies to drainage ditches that are within shoreline jurisdiction or something like that. All right, great. Anything else here in dredging and dredge disposal?
Under D, before you had said you were working with ecology on that, did you work out the words in D or C? With ecology?
I have proposed, I put a proposal in here, right? So the pink language are things that have changed since you last saw the comprehensive document, so and this hasn't changed since October when you got this one, but yeah, so since I made that statement, you know, that is the pink language reflects my proposal there, and that's based on comments that Sarah had made on the draft way back when about, hey, the WAX says you have to make provisions for suitable dredge material and my attempt to do so, and I suspect if it is not adequate, we will hear so, but yeah, this is my attempt to address that issue that was raised by ecology. Because there's a whole, again, you know, if you go to the WAX and one seventy-three, twenty-six, two thirty-one and forty-one, those are all the standards for specific uses and modifications that are, you know, that we're supposed to model our stuff on or straight up just cut and paste and put in here based on whatever the direction is from the guidelines. And so those guidelines had some language in there about that, this topic, and, you know, attempting to address that. All right. And yeah, a lot of this that's in here, you know, five, six, seven is specifically directly modeled after what's in the, the WAC, I just, just reread that today. So, okay.
If there's no, if there's no more questions on the, the section we just completed, I think I'm gonna cut you off, they were getting on their eight thirty.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Andrew, that was a great job. So Ms. Jennifer, do you have any staff updates?
I do, I have an important one, so Tile's the Husky, it has resigned from the planning commission, so Tile, it's due to family obligations and he just wasn't finding the time to be able to spend with us twice a month on Wednesday night, so Tile has resigned. He is, his position will be, will be appointed by Commissioner Mejia, our new commissioner on the board. It is an at-large position, so it can be from not just her district, but someone who lives anywhere in Thurston County. So if folks are listening and want to apply to be on the planning commission, please contact the Board of County Commissioners Office, I believe they have application materials on their webpage. Yeah, so that's the news, and that's all I have.
Thank you. So checking calendars, March third, will anybody be gone away that day? On March seventeen?
I don't know, that sounds Patty's Day.
Well, have your green beer with you, Doug.
Yeah.
So we're all good, at least we'll have five hopefully next couple weeks. Thank you all, thank you staff for making me look good, and we are adjourned.